Good afternoon and welcome to a special meeting for the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission. Today is Wednesday, September 8th, 2010, and we will begin with our agenda, please. Item number one.
Item one is roll call. Commissioner Fod.
Here.
Commissioner Wiseman.
Here.
Commissioner Sahakin. Commissioner Yakubian.
Here.
Chairperson Welch.
Here. Next item, please.
Item one A is flag salute Chairperson Welch.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item two is posting of agenda. The agenda for the Wednesday, September 8th, 2010 special meeting of the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission was posted by Friday, September 3rd, 2010, before 5:30 PM on the bulletin board outside of City Hall.
Very good. Thank you. Next item.
Item three is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision.
Very good. I'll open oral communications, and I have one speaker, Richard Espirito.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. It's been a long time since I had the opportunity to address this commission. I have basically talked about oral communication. Number one, how many of you commissioners I know, Mr. Chad O'Dad, at Dasha, attended the downtown specific plan on a number of occasions? How many of you ever attended the downtown specific plan commission when you were discussing what we were supposed to do, downtown specific plan? One of the issues regarding that was public transportation. And one of the issues that was discussed quite often was increasing the amount of services and even extending it related to the businesses and entertainment areas that were planned in the downtown specific plan. So I think of that issue. Couple of days ago, got up miraculously, don't know how they got there, but I had these items left on my front door about 5:30 in the morning, and there they were. I'd like to understand the purpose of these bulletins that I later found out were posted on the B line buses. Very interesting because they, on one of these things, it talks about options, and then the other one, they talk about fare increases. I will be discussing the fare increases, options later on. The purpose, I'd like to know what the purpose of this was, because this, as I understand, talking to passengers on the B line, talking to the drivers, telling them where to look, this was buried this week, did not tell the whole story. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. That was the only speaker I had, so we'll close oral communications and move on to the next item, please.
Item four is action item. At four A's, report regarding proposed fare increases for Glendale B line and dialeride services and service reductions for Glendale B line fixed route service. At four A one is motion recommending the preferred option for service and fare changes as presented in the Director of Public Work staff report dated September 8th, 2010.
Mr. Bagdani.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Transportation Parking Commission, this is a follow-up to our last regular meeting of the Transportation Parking Commission where we discussed proposed fare increases and basically service restructuring on the B line and the dialeride services. We had prepared a number of options for the commission's consideration with respect to the fare structure and to the service restructuring, and then we had combined the fare structure increases with the level of service or restructuring as an option A, B, and C, if you would recall. Our goal was at that meeting to receive the commission's input, and we got a lot of discussion on that item, and we got some very good input from the commissions as it related to the fare structure or the service changes. And we went back and we looked at our analysis that we had done. We came back to you with two options, option AA and BB, for your consideration and input so that we can essentially present that in a form of a study session to the City Council on September 21st, City Council meeting. Today, what I would like to ask Catherine to present to you, first, the dialeride portion of our services that we didn't get a chance to basically talk about, the fare structure for the dialeride and the service levels for the dialeride, and then walk you through again those new options for your consideration. We also, at the last meeting, questions were raised about the fare elasticity and how we made the fare structure projections, fare projections. We've asked Dan Boyle, which is the principal with his own firm, to be here and give you an overview of the fare structure analysis that he did for us as part of the line-by-line analysis, answer any questions that you may have. And we've attempted to invite everyone that we know that might have an interest and specifically schedule this meeting at the afternoon time where our B line and the dialeride services are being provided, so hopefully we can get more input. As you have seen in your package, whatever input that we received, that I think it was as a result of the bus cards that we put into the buses, that we tried to give the bus riders an idea what we're looking for in terms of fare structure and the service changes, we have phone numbers, information, and because of what we did on the buses is what the information that you see in your packet, this is the input that we received from our riders on the B line. So I think that may answer Mr. Espirito's question as to why it was, we did not deliver it to anybody, it was on the actual inside the buses, so we tried to do that, and we'll continue to stay in the buses as we go forward. Also, we've, we're still working on scheduling a meeting with the Glendale Unified School District, Glendale Community College, to get their input with their management or the Unified School District Board, to receive their input as much as we can on the proposed changes and hopefully what input or recommendation we receive from the commission today that would help us to move that forward and say at least the commission has recommended one of these options with whatever modifications you may have today. With that, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Engel to continue the presentation.
Very well. Ms. Engel.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch, and members of the commission. We have some slides from our last meeting that are in reserve in case we need to talk about routes, but I'd like to start today with some of the fare policy that we ended at the last meeting with, so we can be really clear on what we're looking at for dialeride and then also for fixed route, and then we'll get back into the two options that we're looking at, that were commissioned options from our last meeting. So if we address dialeride first, in our proposal, we have, based on the comments that we heard from the last commission meeting, one of the things we talked about was not wanting to impact service for the dialeride program, and so we had recommended some options for cutting Sunday service or an equivalent of Sunday service hours to have some cost savings in the dialeride program. What we heard the commission say was, let's not cut back the service for dialeride and let's absorb that cost impact on the fixed route system where we have a little bit larger size and more ability to absorb that impact. And then what we would take a look at then is potentially some fare increase on the dialeride for the dialeride passengers, but no service reduction. So proposed today, we have a couple of options in your packet, but as staff is recommending that we look at $1.25 for a one-way passenger trip for dialeride and increasing the dialeride fare by 25 cents each year until we reach a $2 fare structure. So that would be 25 cents for the next three years, well, the first year plus the next three years, that would get us up to a $2 fare. We have an option right now in the packet of $1.25 or $1.50. We think the $1.25 is reasonable if we can look at kind of an ongoing cost increase over time. A new fare that we proposed is for a personal care attendant. We haven't charged for a personal care attendant in the past. We don't have very many that ride with passengers, regular dialeride passengers on the service. So this is one of those planning ahead pieces. As our population gets a little bit older, and we want to have some flexibility for them to continue traveling on dialeride, and still because that personal care attendant does pick up or takes up a seat in the dialeride van, is looking at how we can have that two-person trip a little higher, more highly subsidized by the passenger versus the program itself. The third piece to our fare restructuring would be increasing the senior age for new participants to age 65. We will still invite anyone disabled of any age to participate in the dialeride program. What this would help us to do is to kind of manage demand over time. Now, they say the 65 is the new 40, and we're all living healthier and longer. We'd like to kind of control the demand on dialeride, encourage people to still use fixed route transportation, which is fully accessible, gives them a little bit more ability to travel at more hours, more frequency, less planned trips, where dialeride, you'd have to call in ahead of time and make your reservation. So it's a little bit more, it's not as spontaneous as using the fixed route system would be. So we're hoping to kind of migrate the age for the dialeride users to a little bit higher. So anyone right now who is under 65 would still be grandfathered in and continue to participate in the program, but we'd actually have, any new participants would come in at 65 or over. And then we're looking at retaining the same level of door-to-door service that we're currently providing. So no impact to hours or span of service, just restructuring the fares a little bit to better manage the demand on the service and the cost for the overall program. Questions on dialeride?
I have a couple of questions. Have you calculated in, if you raise that, will you lose estimated numbers of dialeride participants?
We won't, because it's only going to affect new riders. And right now, our capacity and our demand are pretty evenly matched, so it's really looking ahead to how do we manage with the baby boomers coming through, a potential increase on demand where we don't have any additional capacity. And most of our, say, a good percentage of our current riders are in the higher end of the senior brackets, a lot of, I would say, 75 to 90-year-old group versus the younger group. I think older adults are more active, and so they're staying more independent longer.
And the $18 that you quote here is the cost per one-way passenger trip. Is that a net cost or is that the gross cost before effect, the fare?
That's the gross cost.
That's the gross cost.
For our last year's cost.
So the actual net cost would be a dollar less than that or a $1.25?
That's correct.
Okay. And is all the dialeride, is it vans, all vans?
We have a fleet of four minivans, which carry three or four passengers, depending upon wheelchair capacity, and then we have two larger vans that are 18-passenger vans that carry the larger group trips that we have.
And has ever, have you ever looked at using cars or even taxi cabs as part of that service?
I have to defer to Mr. Bogdanian for that.
Mr. Chairman, we had, in the past, we also had taxis, what we call them the overflow. So when we, our space was limited on the vans, we get flooded with a lot of requests, we would ask the taxi overflow to be provided as an additional service.
Is that something you still do now?
We're not doing it. By doing some service restructuring, it became very, very expensive because you were paying per passenger on a taxi cab. So with some of the service restructuring we did, we were able to basically absorb the loads that we have right now without adding any more taxi cab service. But it's still something in the future, if we have to, we will do it. But we added those two larger vehicles that Catherine was mentioning for the bigger groups, so that's worked out okay for us.
Okay. Very good. Thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, two questions. First, how, what is the cost structure? We have four vans plus two larger vans. Are they, are those drivers paid all the time or are they paid on a per-trip basis? I'm just trying to, and then sort of part of capacity versus cost, are we running at a 100% capacity? Are we running at 85%? That's sort of.
I'll answer that as best as I can, Commissioner Fod, Chairman Welsh, and the commissioners. The capacity piece, right now, we run about four and a half passengers per hour. We are one of the more productive dialeride programs, and that's because we allow a very high percentage of subscription trips. So for folks that are doing dialysis or going to nutritional meals or have a regular event that they attend either once a week or every day during the week, we pre-program their ride into our dispatch system. That allows us to really be very efficient in how we structure our routes for pickups and how many people we carry and the directional miles that we travel in being able to deliver those passengers. So at 8 o'clock in the morning, I can tell you we're at 100% capacity. There'll be other times in the day where we're not at 100% capacity, where we could squeeze on another person, but again, it depends on where that vehicle is going and are you along the route for, between those other predetermined destinations. So the average ridership per hour for dialeride is about two and a half to three passengers per hour, and we're in the four and a half, almost to five for most days. So do we have a little bit more capacity? Yes, if you're, if you want to travel at off-hours.
And again, is it a fixed charge? Are we paying the drivers whether or not the van rolls or is the van always rolling or sort of, is there any variability in our cost?
The only variability is the number of people that we're actually carrying. We have a unique contract with our dialeride. We only, the city only pays per trip and per trip completed in that, in the process. The drivers are paid the whole time, but it's a separate kind of component to that. So we have our general cost to run the system, so the drivers make the same fares depending on which vehicle or the same cost per hour for the drivers, no matter what type of vehicle they're driving. So we purchase an overall system from Southland Transportation, but when they bill us, they bill us per completed passenger trips. So it guarantees efficiency, it gives them the incentive to carry as many passengers they can during our revenue service, and we limit the hours of revenue service, and we obviously have the limit on the number of vehicles we provide. So the more trips they can provide with those six vehicles between eight and five, technically the more money they make to cover their costs.
Do they also handle the dispatching?
Yes. They do dispatch, they do maintenance, and the driver operations.
So you would say the capacity is about, it matches usage, roughly. And my other question is, how do these proposed costs match with other comparable cities in the area?
Our cost for dialeride, for the type of dialeride that we're providing and the amount of use and the quality that we require of our contractors, we are right in the average range for most large systems our size. There are some smaller systems that use taxis and that are a much smaller organization, don't have as much oversight or requirements for maintenance, and so their costs are a little bit cheaper. But for bang for the buck, we are right in with other comparable groups.
Under the new structure, continue.
Yes. We have much higher standards for maintenance and operations for our system than many of the other smaller systems in our, in our area. That's just Glendale. That's who we are. We want good quality service and well-maintained vehicles.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on.
So for moving then to the B line for the fixed route service, again, we're looking at the proposal, the commission option BB for the level of service, and option BB included a 75-cent fare in the new plan. So the 75-cent fare would be for routes one through seven, our normal B line routes, and staff is suggesting increasing it to 20, another 25 cents to a dollar, beginning in July 2012. So again, kind of an incremental increase over time that seemed to be very reasonable. For the express route, which is the MetroLink Express, assuming we only have one route that remains, we would be charging a $2 one-way fare. Again, the express routes were more expensive to operate in the process. And with the one, and the express fares, we do get a half of the fare reimbursed by MetroLink through the EZ Pass program. So the passenger would pay a dollar cash for the fare, and the other dollar would come from the MetroLink reimbursement. We are suggesting that we retain the 31-day pass and the 10-trip card. In the line-by-line, we had talked about getting rid of the 10-trip card, but looking at the fare structure with a fare increase, we wanted to provide as much flexibility for passengers as we could, so we're encouraging multiple uses of the B line with a 31-day pass with a 25% discount over paying a cash fare. If someone doesn't travel quite as often, but they're loyal B line riders, we still want to have an option if they didn't have enough money for a 31-day pass to be able still buy a 10-trip pass that would let them, give them more access to the system than having to pay cash, and we wanted to reward that loyalty with a 10% savings. The other new fare that we would have is the B line to B line transfer. We haven't had transfers before because our base fare was so low, it was just 25 cents. So we didn't provide transfers between buses. If you rode a bus three and changed to a bus seven, you would pay 25 cents each time you rode the bus. So with the new system with 75 cents or a dollar fare, we didn't want the passenger to have to pay that 75 cents or the dollar the next time they transferred to a bus. And so we're suggesting to have a B line to B line transfer of 25 cents, which would be equivalent to what they would be doing currently. And then along with the senior program for dialeride, we also want to look at the senior age for the B line and increasing that age to 65 also, and that would start with any passengers that were currently either using the system or new passengers using the system when this fare change went into effect. So those are all the fare pieces, and I know we had some fare questions from the last commission meeting, and we did invite Dan Boyle to come and talk to us about elasticity and are the numbers that we're projecting real. So as you move into selection, selecting your service options, you'll know that the revenues and the planned expenses match up. So we'll come back to the service options in level BB. But what I'd like to do at this point then is reintroduce to you Dan Boyle, who was here from our line-by-line over a year ago. Dan has a bachelor's and a master's from Cornell. He is a transplant from the East Coast and has great experience, 30 years of experience in transportation planning, both for the state of New York Department of Transportation and also for New York City Transit Authority, and then went into consulting in the more recent years with a couple of different agencies, and then in 2000 opened up his own company. And we are glad to have him here because he is probably the, in the United States, one of the best experts on fares and how to price fares and elasticity of fares and anything to do with fares. He's served on the National Transportation Research Board Committee on fare development or fare studies and fare policy, starting back in 1994. He's been involved in publishing the literature on fare that everyone uses here in the United States. So with no further ado, Dan, welcome again to TPC.
Thank you, and thank you, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here again. It's been about a year since I spoke with you, and I just want to run through kind of a quick overview of the elasticity issue because this is key to how we calculate the impacts on ridership and the resulting revenues of the proposed changes. Catherine's mentioned my background, so I don't need to go into that, but if you want to go to the next slide, just an overview quickly. Talk a little bit about the elasticities, how we measured the ridership impacts in this study, and how we developed the revenue forecasts. We could talk probably for, well, I could talk for hours about elasticities, you might doze off after about 10 minutes, but it's a, it's a very useful concept for measuring the impact. So we go to the next slide. Elasticities are the most common way that we use. Basically, it's a measure of the response of demand in resulting from a price change. Economists use this all the time. So the typical elasticity value that's been used in this country, and it comes from a 1968 study by Simpson and Curtin, is minus 0.3. And what that says is for every 10% increase in fares, ridership will drop by 3%. That has been proven over and over again in various studies in various locations around the country. There are some other values cited in literature that are slightly higher. The American Public Transit Association did a study that's recommended a minus 0.4. Now, I'm a proud member of APTA, but they're basically a lobbying firm for the transit agency, and it's in their benefit to have a somewhat higher elasticity because it implies that ridership will respond more strongly. We use the, this will be the change, all things being equal, and that's one of the problems in doing elasticity studies, is this assumes that service is the same, the economy's the same, and it's very hard to isolate the fare impacts when things change rapidly. Back in 1981, it's embarrassing to think it was that long ago, after the '79 energy crisis, we looked and we saw agencies raging fares and their ridership was going up, and it didn't make any sense. So we did a study, and what we did was we adjusted the ridership by what we projected, if the trends continued, what the ridership would be, and then we saw that the elasticity, in fact, of minus 0.3 still worked. In other words, we kind of tried to put in the background of what was going on in the country with the gas prices out of sight. That was, as you remember, a huge jolt. We've had similar price increases, but not as massive, I don't think, as '73 and '79. So even in those unusual circumstances, when we took account of the underlying trend, we were able to predict with this elasticity value, the ridership results from fare changes and then the revenue. There are different ways to calculate elasticity. That minus 0.3 is what's called the shrinkage ratio. We calculate it by the change in ridership divided by the change in fares, and that's how this has been calculated. I use it all the time because it's the simplest way to do it. There are midpoint arch elasticities that I have a lot of information on, but I don't think I'll get into today because I'm not a math teacher, but those are preferred by economists because they actually look at a series of minor changes and add them up into a total change. When you calculate the arch elasticity, it generally is a higher number than the shrinkage ratio elasticity, and some of those minus .4s have come from arch elasticity studies, but they're not directly comparable because applying the arch elasticity is a very involved formula. It's an involved formula to develop it, and so if you talk about, they're really measuring two slightly different things. If you run through an example, you'll see that using different elasticities, an arch elasticity with the arch elasticity formula and the shrinkage ratio with a simpler formula, we come out to the same numbers. Again, if you're interested, I have some examples of that that I took out of a TCRP, Trend Cooperative Research Program report. So using that elasticity, we calculated the ridership based on the percentage change in fares for the various phases of the fare increase. Then looking at how to calculate the revenue, well, the average revenue per boarding will change when the change happens, but the average revenue per boarding is not the same as a cash fare. Right now, for example, with a 25-cent fare, the average revenue per boarding is actually 20 cents because seniors and disabled have a lower fare and some other factors. So we assume that all groups will be equally affected by the changes and that we can figure an average revenue per boarding based on the percentage change in overall fares, that the average revenue per boarding will also go up by the same amount. And we apply that to get the revenue from the ridership that we forecast. The unknown, as I mentioned, is outside factors. This is kind of a pure analysis of what the fares will do. The ridership in the coming year will be affected by if the economy turns around, if the ridership trends that we see continue, and so forth, but this is really looking at the core issue that we wanted to get at in this particular piece of the line-by-line, which is what will a fare change do for the system. So that's basically the overview. So that's basically the overview. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, I mean, this is the issue where I came up against a roadblock because I did not understand how these numbers translated into the projections that are being put forward. For example, option B, or BB, as we're discussing tonight, today, is the 75 cent fare increase, okay? Now, that's a 200% increase over the current fare. So if you apply that against your elasticity, that would indicate that we would lose 60% of our passengers. Is that actually the number that we used in these calculations?
You know, when we did the original study, we had a three-phase. We were going to go from 25 to 50 cents in mid-year, actually, in January of a year ago. We're going to go from 50 to 75 this July and 75 to a dollar. So we applied that minus 0.3 to the 25 to 50 and the 50 to 75.
But we're not talking about that here.
We're not talking about that, that's true. Another factor is that the elasticities are, have been refined and developed over the years for relatively normal fare changes. And a 200% fare change is a little outside the realm of what has been used. If you were to ask me what to do, I would say that the elasticity would be lower for a 200% fare change because I don't believe you'll lose 60% of your ridership. When we looked at the riders, the majority are going to work or to school. Those are not discretionary trips. Alternative is MTA, and metro's fares are higher still. So we're not going to lose people to metro. And some people might choose to walk or drive cars, but that becomes problematic in this economy as well.
Right. No, I understand. I understand transit-dependent riders are much, have a lower elasticity applied against them. Is there anything in that's been studied of similar kinds of huge increases and the effect on ridership that those have had?
There have not been too many increases of this size because it's been a long time since places have had 25 cent fares. You know, we did the peer study, and Glendale was clearly the lowest of its peers in terms of the fare charge. So most systems, you know, when they were at 25 cents years ago, a 35 cent fare was a big increase to have. You know, I don't believe there are, there are probably a couple, but not many, in the literature about what the impact of a large fare change is.
So given that, what were the underlying assumptions that, in your analysis, to determine this for option B, a $1.2 million of additional revenue? So what is that based upon in terms of your estimate of ridership and loss that you're projecting for this?
I'd have to go back and look exactly at the numbers we put together in the table that was in the line-by-line that we.
So these numbers are coming more from the line-by-line, which is talking about the stepped increases?
And then we added some things in because the things have changed. For example, the idea of upping the express fare to $2 was a later addition that was not in the original. So between myself and the staff, we kind of figured out what that was going to look like, that resulted in some additional revenue as well.
Well, I'm sure you can understand my concern because we're talking about, you know, 200%, even 100 or 200% fare increase. You know, and if we follow the standard literature, as you said, this Simpson-Curtin rule of thumb, you know, we would be facing huge losses in ridership. And that's certainly something that I don't think anybody on this panel or the city council wants to see. So that's, I'm trying to dig into this a little bit because I want to make sure that we have as much information as possible.
That's a good thing to do. It's, you know, it's an important decision. If you had asked me for my professional opinion, I would say you're probably going to lose 40% of your ridership with a 200% increase. That would be my guess, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay. You guys have other questions?
Well, two questions. I think you're implying that a fare increase from, say, 25 to 50, although 100% increase, is different than a fare increase, say, from $1.75 to $2. It's both 25 cents, but because we're starting at such a low level, it probably doesn't have the impact that a... And the other question I had is, how permanent are the losses?
That's a very good question. I think that you do see losses, and as time goes on, more people will migrate to the system. So that, you know, it depends really on those background questions. Once the economy comes back, people are traveling more to work and have a little more money to travel for other purposes as well, you will see the ridership come back.
Well, again, I mean, all things being equal, is there a rule of thumb that in two years, three years, one year, you're back to where you were? Or what's?
There is no rule of thumb on that, really.
What's been your experience? Or what's, what do you think?
I think that you probably will be lower than where you are now in terms of ridership over the next five years. But in the five-to-10-year period, assuming that, you know, the recession doesn't last and things return to more of what we call normal, you would see more of a return. The other complicating factor here is that, is having metro. And their fares are so much higher than the B-lines that it, it, it's, there's, the alternative looks worse in terms of trying to take another bus line or something. So people may be more willing to stay with B-line because the fare, even though it goes up, is lower than the alternative.
Well, I mean, that raises an interesting point. You got the metro, you have B-line, then I guess you have driving.
Mm-hmm.
Or whatever alternative. How would you, when people, what would you suggest is the, could you sort of state what is the effect of metro having a higher fare? And then sort of, is the runoff to people taking a car, you know, so where does the ridership go? And sort of, how do all these three things play out?
Good question. And, you know, one of the things that we have the hardest time doing, we sometimes try to do surveys of former riders and find out why they quit riding. The single largest reason, and it's hard to find these people, but, you know, in, if you just do a random telephone survey, you know, that's not, but the single largest reason that shows up is they bought a car. And that is where I think transit loses most of its ridership. But actually, if you look at the surveys and see how long people have used the B-line, there's a fair number of new riders coming in every year. Transit ridership tends, you know, you have some people who've been on the B-line since it started. But there's more of a turnover with people leaving, possibly because they buy a car or they move out or whatever, and other people moving in who rely on the B-line. So it becomes a little trickier to really pin down an answer to that question. I would say that most, there are a number of transit-dependent on the B-line. As I recall, 34% of the riders did not have a car in their household, and the income level was fairly low. So there is a fair amount of transit dependency among riders. But even there, you know, their alternative is to get a ride from someone else if they don't have a car. So it's always hard to measure that, the absolute level of transit dependency, people who have no other alternative. I don't think we asked that question on this particular survey, but I have found that, you know, the people who ride, often you'll see 15 to 20% maybe have no other choice. And this, again, does not come from the B-line survey. I don't think we had that question on that because we ran out of space, but from other surveys.
And just one more question. If you were advising us, you know, one of our thoughts is, how do we, how do we treat metro service on the same routes that we have B-line? Can we sort of say they're interchangeable, and if it's being provided by the other carrier, fine? Would you have any thoughts as to, are they interchangeable? I mean, their fare being higher, it's probably not, but do you have any sort of thoughts on that?
Well, I would say that.
Can we look at them on an integrated basis?
It partly depends on the corridor because some of your routes have longer trip lengths than others. But in general, the B-line will pick up the shorter trips, whereas the longer trips will tend to migrate to metro because they don't have to transfer. Metro lines go farther. So many times, in some cases, you know, you do have a metro and a B-line route on the same street, and yet they're serving different markets. Brandon and Central is a great example. You know, people are traveling within the city on brand, they're going to hop on the B-line. If they're coming from south of the city or west of the city out in the valley, they're going to be on metro. So it's always, metro used to be much more sensitive, and they are sensitive if we tried to start a route on one of their routes. But they've come to accept the idea a little more that there's different markets that these services operate, not just by Glendale, but by other municipal operators. You know, LA DOT has a number of dash routes in neighborhoods that, when they first started metro, said, "We don't want you on our, on our main streets." Well, it's very difficult to get around a neighborhood if the main street isn't usable. And eventually, they came to realize that that was not going to eat into their market. Their price was so high that people weren't going to travel that short distance on the metro. Any people that the local routes would pick up, they'd pick up because their price was lower. I don't know if that fully answers your question, but...
Mr. Weissman?
Yes, I wanted to start, Mr. Boyle, by thanking you for coming down today. We did have some burning questions about elasticity, so glad to have the opportunity to speak with you. It's also been about 25 years since I took microeconomics, and so I'm hopefully not going to say anything dumb while struggling with the concept of elasticity. What I wanted to ask you about was a question that sort of arose in my mind after seeing the Bus Riders Union down at metro headquarters in downtown Los Angeles and the realization that fare increases, such as the types that we are discussing, are felt disproportionately harder by lower-income transit ridership. I was wondering, do you have any studies or any information personally you know about that might lead you to conclude that elasticity changes depending on income level, whereas instead of treating all transit riders as one big group, do you think there's some higher sensitivity, maybe, to the fare increases at the lower-income end of the spectrum?
That's a good question. You know, and much of the, the federal government hasn't sponsored that much work on elasticities in the past 20 years, which is why, when you look at the literature, most of the stuff goes back to the 80s or so. But some authors have tried to break that down, looking at, you know, the discretionary trips versus the non-discretionary trips and by income level as well. And there's kind of two factors working there. One is, with less income, you're less likely to, you know, you're going to be more sensitive to a fare increase because you have a lower income. But the other piece is that many of the low-income riders are making non-discretionary trips, so they're going to find a way to still fund those. And it's hard to say exactly where that intersects. I think different studies have come out in somewhat different places, and there hasn't been an overall conclusion that lower-income people are more or less sensitive to fare increases because those two factors do kind of work at cross purposes.
Yeah, sort of what underlies that question for me as a commissioner is, I don't want to raise prices to the point that our transit-dependent ridership are going to get locked out. And so it's somewhat of a tightrope we're going to have to walk, I think, to get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyle, for coming and answering our questions. I, you gave your professional opinion about the 40% reduction in ridership, and that still is a little bit shocking to me, although less than the 60 based on the elasticity equations. How much does the reduction of services play in the part, play into your, I guess, the psychology, I guess, of the person who's riding? There's the issue of raising the fare, but then there's the issue of raising the fare and then having reduction of services. How did that play into your calculation? Is it purely just raising the fare, you know, to 75 cents? Or is it, are you taking into consideration the other events that are under consideration to it?
That's a good question. This particular part of the analysis, we're simply looking at the fares, trying to isolate the fare impact. It is interesting, though, the typical service elasticity we use is plus 0.6, which is twice in terms of the actual magnitude, the fare elasticity. And we've done some surveys with riders elsewhere, asking them, if we have, faced with a choice of cutting fares, of raising fares or cutting service, which would you prefer? And usually, about a two-to-one margin, they say, "Raise my fares, but leave my service here." So there's, I think, a somewhat greater sensitivity to the service aspect of it than the fares. If riders had a choice, they would prefer to see their service, and they'll figure out a way to pay for it, as opposed to not having a service at any price. But again, in this fare analysis, we tried to be as specific as we could about what the impacts of the fare changes are going to be. We looked at some of those other issues when we were looking at the changes in cost when we, when we would change service levels. But for this particular analysis, it was purely the fare impact.
Just a hypothetical, then, going along with that. If they were to do, if there was to be, were to be an increase in the fare, yet, let's say, in this situation, there's increased services and increased, you know, lines and such forth, do you believe that that could change that number, that 40%?
Would probably moderate it somewhat, I think. You know, one of the things we've done in the most recent iteration is look at places where we might be able to put some trips back where we have overcrowding, which are usually around GCC's class starts and end times and the bell times at some of the schools like Hoover, which a lot of students use to get transit, to get there. So, you know, in an ideal world, which we're not facing because of the funding issues, are, you know, you would try to balance that fare increase with some service increases. And we've tried to do that where we can reallocate some services to where we think they'll be most used. And I wish we could have done some more of that, but the budget envelope we have really wouldn't let us. But where we could, we've tried to do that. And that will probably moderate the ridership change.
Okay, thank you.
I want to follow up on the question of, basically, customer substitution, which is talked about in terms of going to a car or something like that. Because we have also metro or MTA service that's fairly frequent throughout Glendale, it occurs to me that we might have an issue of customer substitution in terms of opting, people opting for the metro fares, the passes, the monthly passes, okay? Which, as I understand it, which they're still going to basically have free service on B-line, correct? If they buy an EZ pass? No?
For the, Commissioner, or Chairman Welch, if they buy a regular metro pass, they would not be able to ride B-line unless they're doing a transfer from metro to B-line in a trip headed one direction. Then they would pay the inter-agency transfer of 50 cents. But if they do buy an EZ transit pass, which was a countywide pass, then they would be able to travel, use that one pass to travel metro, B-line, any of the other regional operators, and some of the other local operators here in the county.
And what do we get in terms of reimbursement for that?
Half of the fare.
Half of the fare? Okay. And because that's already an existing policy that's presumably built into the core numbers here, and, you know, because, you know, if you look at the overall fare box revenues, it's only about 20, 18 to 20 cents compared to the 25 cents. So that's built into that.
That's correct.
calculation as well. Okay. All right. So looking at, assuming your number is correct of a 40% fare reduction, passenger reduction, we had 2.3 million passenger boardings for the fiscal year 2009. If that is reduced by 40%, that drops it to 1.4 million. And if we assume that, and 75 cents as the fare, and we assume that same sort of 70% average is covered, that generates $735,000 in total fare box. And we're already getting about $395,000 previously. So it's really only a net increase of $340,000 versus the 1.2 million that was put in the option B. Can we talk a little bit about this?
I'm a little bit of a disadvantage because I don't have my spreadsheet in front of me.
Okay. But you can, you can see, it's a pretty wide disparity. So this is what, this is what caused me, because I did this quick and dirty math myself before last meeting, which is why I was saying, the 1.2 million projection, I'm saying, I don't understand how we get there. Because it's, we have to assume that there's going to be some drop-off in ridership, whatever that is. I don't know, maybe it will be less because we have a fair number of transit-dependent riders, and I agree with that. But, you know, it would have to be zero to be able to get to that 1.2 million figure.
Mr. I would say, just quickly in response, that you have a 40% decrease in ridership, but those 60% of the riders you still have are paying triple what they did. And I think that was where the numbers were generated from, plus of additional changes such as the express fare on the 11 with a large increase. And I did go back and look at those numbers, and I was pretty confident that, you know, we had done the calculations correctly.
Okay, well, again, I'm just doing my analysis here based on what you told me, and the numbers just don't add up to me. So, again, before we get to the point of, you know, the city council making a final determination, I will certainly be making a recommendation that they fully understand the math behind this and what the real expected possible increase possible increase in fares will be. Because I certainly don't want to go into it expecting 1.2 million, only getting 300,000, and then all of a sudden, here we are back at the drawing board again, looking for other big increases in fares or big service cuts.
I agree with you. That would be the worst possible outcome.
Yes.
And my job is to make sure it doesn't happen, so.
Thank you, yes. Okay. All right. So with that, I think we can move on to the next part of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it takes us back at this point, then, to the options that Commission had suggested at our last commission meeting, which would be Option BB on the service levels. And Option BB, which is in your commission packet, is based on the cancellation of Route 12, the cancellation of Route 13, adjustments to Route 3, where every other trip goes to the college, or every trip goes to the college and every other trip goes to JPL, and just some other minor modifications to Route 1 and 2 on Central and Brand, moving it from 20-minute headways to 30-minute headways. So a little bit less service, but timing that service in between the Metro service so that there's a good coverage for the corridor as far as options are able to get transit service, but trying to make it so not all the buses are showing up at the same time and still providing service in that, that area. So staff is recommending Option BB, which ties to the 75-cent fare. Option AA is service without the Brand and Central Boulevard changes and ties to the $1 fare. So in hearing the discussion about fares and the concern for the ridership impact with raising it to $1, I think staff looked at what's the best possible scenario. Most of the comments we received, the public comments we received were, maintain the service as much as possible, and we'll, we'd rather have an increase in fares, which goes along with what Mr. Boyle had said. I think the breadth of service we have and the ability to offer service during a large span of service during the day, and being able to continue some of the service across town that Metro doesn't currently provide, was more important than the fare impact. So staff is recommending, if Commission had to make a choice between their two options, that Option BB, which includes the service decrease on Brand and Central, but keeps the lower fare at 75 cents.
And the difference in the savings, because you actually save less with a dollar fare, of course, I think, it's $950,000 versus $1,000,000. And that's because you're maintaining the service on Brand and Central?
The basic difference between the two is the Brand-Central service.
But you're charging $1, and I guess that means more drop-off in ridership. So all-in, you get, you get the numbers you show here?
Correct.
And you say you can, you can dispatch Beelines so they are between MTA buses, so there, there's no bunching, it'll?
One of the requirements we have for service, Commissioner Fogg, is, is that our service has to be coordinated and integrated with the regional service carriers. So again, when we talked about our line-by-line in previous meetings, the whole purpose of the Beeline is really as a feeder service to the regional service. So it's really that inner-city circulation and the connection to the longer regional long-haul routes. So if we were doing that well, we'd want to be able to have our service be able to move people to connect to the Metro services that are going to take them on that longer trip. So when we do our scheduling, we look at trying to, if Metro's running 30-minute schedule service, and we're running 30-minute scheduled, the bus will come by every 15 minutes, so you're able to ride the Beeline bus to connect to the Metro bus in more of a seamless fashion. So those transfers are a little bit better timed and easier to make. So we wouldn't want to, we would try to avoid running a Metro bus and a Beeline bus on top of each other down the same corridor.
Well, this notion, you're saying that Beeline is designed to be a feeder, is that, that's just on Routes 1 and 2, or is that system-wide?
Actually, it is system-wide for those folks that are doing what we call long-haul services. We have a lot of people that come to work in Glendale that come from Los Angeles. And so they will take the 92 bus, for instance, will come from downtown Los Angeles, it'll come up Brand. But if they're going to go to Glendale College, or they're going someplace west to G, to Grand Central, they're going to have to ride a Beeline bus to get there. So they'll, they'll be using the long-haul services to come to Glendale, and then they'll find the most convenient transfer location that gets them to their final destination. So that would work in reverse. At the end of the day, they'd use the Beeline to get to their long-haul routes and then travel, travel out of there.
Do you have any notion of the percentage of those sort of connecting, connecting rides versus standalone rides within Glendale? Like, if you're going to Hoover High, presumably you haven't taken an MTA bus beforehand.
Well, for the, for the local service, there, there aren't as many transfers between the routes. And we don't actually collect data on the Beeline-to-Beeline transfers. So if you live to town, in town, and you're going to go to Hoover, you're probably going to take Beeline to get there. Because there's, there's two routes that direct, drop you directly at the door, and you can connect with those two routes from almost all the other Beeline routes in the system. Where you, where you really see the transfers is, are people that are working in town, that are coming, that live out of town, that are working in town.
Do you have a percentage, are 60% of your riders from an MTA connection? Or does it vary dramatically by route, or?
About 14% of our riders have a Metro connection, or they were using at one point a Metro fare media to ride the Beeline. We don't, we don't have, because of how we had structured our service before, we don't have data that collects the Metro-to-Beeline transfers. Because before, it was free, and so we never collected that. But at one point, we did have about 14% of riders who rode Metro or had Metro passes that also rode Beeline.
And if you reduce the buses on, on Brand and Central, do you know, how, what would be the, the interval all-in?
Right now, there's about 12, when we did the survey, there were about 12 buses per hour. So that's a lot of service on, on Brand. There's less service on Central. Metro doesn't run on Central. So with the service change, there'd probably be, I want to say, six buses an hour on Brand, and then there'd be two buses an hour on Central.
But with MTA, what would, including MTA, what would be the?
Would be, I, six buses.
Six buses an hour from 12?
Because when we did the survey, we also had Rapid Bus running on Brand. And since we did the survey, Rapids now moved to San Fernando Road. Because there wasn't enough ridership to sustain, sustain the Rapid Service on Brand Boulevard. And the San Fernando Corridor is a huge transit corridor for that Rapid Service, so.
That's, that's 10 minutes, service every 10 minutes.
Yeah, we have much more service on Brand than was ever utilized.
Miss Engle, I have a question about Route 3. I guess you brought it up. It was kind of sticking in, sticking in my thoughts at the last meeting. The, the schools that are serviced on the 3, the kids up there on Foothill, based on the proposed changes, am I correct to understand that a bus will be coming, every other, every other bus will be going up there? So the spacing between, wait time between the buses would be approximately what?
For the, the Route 3 that does not have overlapping La Cuenyada service would be every 40 minutes. Between the college and JPL would be every 40-minute service on the regular Beeline 3. And then the City of La Cuenyada purchases service from us, and they run a shuttle service from Montrose to JPL. And that service runs all day, and then they have afternoon additional service for the after-school hours. And that service is every 20 minutes, plus the additional afternoon service cuts out in about every 10-minute service. So all the schools along Foothill Boulevard are captured by the City of La Cuenyada. There's
They're captured up to the point of, if there's a child who's up there who wants to come down, you know, further south, or even around the Glendale College area, they would be waiting every 40 minutes?
That's correct.
And is there, was the, and I don't have it in front of me, the alightings and boardings for that area, was it significant for the, for the 3?
No, it wasn't. And that was why our recommendation to the Commission was to reduce the amount of service between the college and JPL. The ridership in that corridor between the college and Foothill Boulevard is very, very small comparatively. So there's not a lot of demand for the service. And once you get up into the foothills, there's generally very little demand in the, in the whole north Glendale area. And what I'll do is, let me pull up the Route 3 map for you. So I put the Route 3 map up on, on the board. Two-thirds of the ridership, or half of the ridership, if you look at the lower left-hand corner, two, half of the riders ride between downtown Glendale and the college. 10% of the riders between, we ride between Glendale College and Montrose. And the other 39% ride between Montrose and JPL. So the, the highest ridership along Foothill Boulevard is really in the La Cuenyada section of the route, from Ocean View, which is kind of where the, the big dot Foothill and Castle is at the top, east to JPL. There's very little transit demand, and you can see by the Transit Oriented Index that we have, the residential index, other than outside of the kind of downtown Montrose area, there is not a lot of transit dependency along Foothill Boulevard in Glendale or in the LA County and Incorporated area of La Cuenyada. So it's just, it's tough to use the bus because you're either walking way uphill or way downhill. And so it's, it's not as attractive. And, and when you don't have the, the economic dependency in that area, there's other options for them to use. So they're really not riding the bus in that, in that northern section.
Okay. But within that Foothill stretch, you haven't really, you haven't broken down, you know, at what point does it start waning on just that stretch of Foothill Boulevard? Because I mean, I don't know if I'm, maybe I'm not even reading it correctly, but by the line-by-line analysis, I'm seeing, I'm seeing significant boardings and alightings up La Cuenyada and turning around up that corner, that sharp corner up there. Perhaps it, it decreases going down. But I'd hate to see, I mean, I can save this for comments later, but I just hate to see children who do depend, and I know, I know many depend on the bus, to come. And I hate to see a child, you know, waiting so long to take, to take a bus. So that's, that was my concern, but.
We do have in the, Commissioner Recobian, we do have in the line-by-line analysis a breakdown in segments along Route 3 for that area. And again, the Harvard and Louise to the college obviously is the, the most highly-ridden section. What happens at the top on the, the northern portion is our last connection with Metro service, the 90 and 91 buses that run along Foothill Boulevard. That's the last place where you can ride a Beeline bus to transfer to Metro to go west into San Fernando Valley. So the boardings and alightings there are more of a, an impact of what's happening with those riders making that connection ride versus students in that area.
Students, okay.
Other comments, questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Fogg. Since the Commission had recommended cancellation of Route 12 and Route 13, staff put together some additional data for those recommendations because we wanted to double-check and make sure things hadn't changed a whole lot since 2008, when we did the 100% one-day survey. So we did put some information together to kind of give a historical perspective on Route 12 and then also on Route 13. So again, Route 12 is our San Fernando Road corridor that runs from GTC on the south to basically Grand Central in Glendale, and then on to the Burbank Intermodal Transportation Center, the train station in, in Burbank. Service mostly Metrolink passengers during peak service, morning and afternoon. So we looked at ridership for the Route 12 over the last three years to kind of say, okay, the, the line-by-line was done in fiscal year 2009 as a snapshot, what's, what's happened to that route over the three-year period. So you'll see that the ridership has increased a little bit each year. So our subsidy per passenger, the, the net cost to the city for those passengers in 2008 was about $10. We've brought that down to about $7 as we've kind of trimmed service and tried to recalculate how buses meet the trains, to try and be as cost-efficient as we can with that. So the increase in riders and our efficiency on, on scheduling our buses with the trains has brought down some of that cost. If we looked at doing a $2 fare and not changing really anything else, other than maybe cutting an early or late trip that isn't being utilized well, the subsidy per passenger could get as low as about $4 per passenger. So basically, it's the same cost to offer the service, but the rider is picking up a little bit more cost, and the Metro, Metrolink reimbursement is a little bit higher. So our net subsidy is $5.50 if we run the whole route between GTC and Burbank. And if we were to do one of the other options that was previously suggested of running just between GTC and Alameda, which would be our Grand Central area, we'd cut down about $100,000 of costs out of the service. With that $2 fare, our subsidy then lowers to about $3.86. One of the things we've talked about since the, the last commission meeting was what other options are out there. We're working with our Transportation Management Association here in town, and Brooke was here, Brooke Earperson was here at our last meeting, and she's here again today. We don't want to abandon those passengers that are in that corridor. And so we were looking at what are some of the other options, since we have such low ridership, that, you know, is there a way to do a Route 12 but find another way to fund it? So we took a look at what would the cost be if passengers paid the $2, and is there a way that we can go and talk to employers about doing the subsidy for the remainder of that cost to operate that service? So in the, we have those two scenarios, running the short trip and running the long trip to Burbank, and, and the impact, the $200,000 to $300,000 that would cost. There are some other options that the TMA or those employers could take a look at. It's very common to have what we call station cars, where either riders of the Metrolink station take what we call a junker mobile. They park it at the station as their to-and-from, their worksite transportation and a, and a way to get out for lunch. So you're, you're not trapped at, at your worksite during the day. It also provides the emergency trip home should a change in schedule occur, and you miss the train or can't take the train back. You have another vehicle available to do that. There are some agencies that have fleet cars within their companies. They're used for deliveries or used for, for services during the day that sit all night. Some of them allow their employees to take those cars to the stations and park them at the station. The employees get off the next, the train the next morning and get back in those vehicles and bring them back to their work sites for use during the day. We also have Metro 94 and 794 service on San Fernando Road in that corridor. It's not quite as convenient because you'd have to get off the train and walk out a block to San Fernando Road to catch the bus. And then doing the same thing on the other end of your trip is walking from Grand Central out to San Fernando Road to be able to make that connection. But there is frequent service with Metro 94 and with the Rapid Service 794, depending on where your bus stop location is, of which service would be, the Rapid doesn't stop as often as the local 94 service. But cost-effectiveness, you know, the Route 12 could go away, and that 94 service is in place today and would be available to use. So it gives you a little bit of history and kind of where we are with, with passengers and the cost for the last three years.
Now, the Rapid bus or the MTA is $2? What's the fare on that?
It's $1.50. It's the same, it's the same cost, $1.50. It just doesn't, it doesn't, because it's Rapid, it doesn't stop at every stop along the route. It only stops at designated stops. And we have seven designated stops on San Fernando Road.
Is there any possibility the MTA could, could divert the buses closer to either station?
Well, that's certainly a question that I have into our planning staff at Metro, knowing if we're pulling off of that service. I, it seems reasonable that they would do that at the Glendale Station because it's a quick in-and-out, there's signalized intersections to get in on in-and-out, there's signalized intersections to get in on Central, go through the bus location where they're already using as a layover for other lines. Burbank's a little bit more difficult because it's harder to get to the station physically, and I don't know if that, it will take them off route too far to be able to make that connection effective. But, I think it would be reasonable to do the connection for GTC.
And, do we know how many passengers originate in the Burbank stations versus originate in Glendale?
Yes, we do.
Because I'm more inclined to support a Glendale-centric service than a Burbank.
There are more...
Burbank, though.
Yeah, there are more passengers at the Burbank Station. And, it's the nature of the Metrolink service that drives that versus the location of the stations. The fare zones for Metrolink, one of the fare zone borders is Burbank. So, it's a different fare to travel from Ventura or North County, Antelope Valley, to Burbank is cheaper than traveling from those areas to Glendale. It's another fare zone to go to the Glendale Station, and it's a considerable amount of money in addition to their pass. The other...
Let me flip the question also to the destination, then. Are the destinations at Burbank or the destinations in Glendale?
The destinations are Glendale.
Interesting.
Almost all the destinations are predominantly Grand Central and then a couple other areas along the San Fernando corridor, mostly between, I would say, Grand View to Alameda.
Okay.
Okay, Route 13, really quick. Any more questions on 12?
Do you have any questions?
Okay. Route 13 is the other route that we've identified for cancellation. Historically, Route 13, well, let me go back. Route 13 came to be as a result of cancellation of Metro 201 service within Glen Oaks Canyon. Metro 201 still runs from downtown Los Angeles to Adventist Hospital. For a while, the city ran service, just regular bus service every day, all day during the week, between the hospital and the end of Glen Oaks Canyon Arcade, which is our current turnaround location. We only had the same amount of passengers that were riding Metro's 201 that were riding our B-line special service during that time. Because we didn't have the ridership, we cut back the service to just five trips a day and three hours of service a day is what it equated to. What I put together for you is kind of an analysis of where we were for the line-by-line, which was a one-day test on our five trips in and out of the canyon. And, you'll see the east-west, we were carrying about 3.2 passengers east and 2.3 passengers west for our passengers per hour. Because the data was from 2008, we did a survey last week, a hundred percent ridership for all five days, to make sure that our data hadn't significantly changed. And, you'll see the average daily trips for last week were 2.8 eastbound and 2.3 westbound.
How many buses are there in an hour? How many buses does that represent?
It's one bus with five trips per day. They're spread out from eight o'clock in the morning until five o'clock at night.
So, there's less than one bus per hour?
Yes. We actually operate three hours per day on that route with five trips. So, our, our demand for service in the canyon hasn't changed any, and the whole reason Route 13 exists was to provide service where Metro pulled off the 201 for us to provide service in the canyon. Most of the ridership is happening between downtown and Adventist, which is supported by other metro routes or other B-line routes. So, it's really redundant. The only reason we, we wanted to give Route 13 someplace to go, so it wasn't just that connection at Adventist Hospital, so we ran it into downtown. So, that was kind of a later, maybe we can make it work better if we actually made it go someplace. So, even in doing that, the folks that we're transporting are people that are already in the downtown corridor and not folks that are in the canyon. So, we have very detailed data. Should anyone want to take a look at who gets on where, and we're not, we're not carrying really any schoolchildren during school hours. It's really folks going to work up in the canyon, housekeepers and service workers.
Any questions for Ms. Engel? I guess briefly, did you study, I had mentioned the last meeting, you know, shortening some of the Route 1 and 2, or did you maybe consider any short turnarounds for any of these routes? And, was that feasible or reasonable?
We didn't do that based on the suggestion of the commission to use Route 12, Route 13, and the change in Route 3. Because those were such large pieces of service to cancel, it really gave us the freedom not to have to cancel significant service anyplace else where there was existing demand, that we wouldn't have to monkey with that and change the, okay, we're now we're paying more, but we have less access or less ability to make those transfers. What we would do, based on commission's recommendation, council's recommendation later, depending on what we end up with as the core piece of the package, we may have to go back and look at, you know, if we stay at 50 cents for a fare, then we'd have to go back and say, okay, where can we trim some of that service? So, then, we'd go back and look at, well, can we shorten ones and twos on the weekends if we're not carrying folks? Can we shorten Route 7, just a brand Boulevard versus running all the way to the college? That's where we're going to pick up any of those additional flexibility without impacting our current ridership now they're using the service.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I do have a couple of speakers, so we'll open a public hearing. Richard Espirito? Mr. Espirito, you put in two cards, but I'm going to only let you speak once, okay? So, it's the same...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear you.
That's okay. Oh, I said you put in two speaker cards for the same item, so...
Actually, there's one for 4A and then one for 4A number one, which is two separate issues.
No, it's actually all one issue that we're considering today, so...
First of all, all of this discussion is based on an audit that was done by contractors for the B-line. According to my contacts with local 848, there was some very interesting things. Number one, these inspectors never started until nine or 12. Number two, they were always doing the inspection of the ridership during vacation time. On Route 7 on Saturday, it stated that between the hours of nine and 12, and that's on the report, there were four people who boarded or alighted from, on the 7. I guess that, two of those were me, one boarding and one alighting. And, on one particular day, there was two other people that alighted that had gone to Ralph's Market and picked up their groceries along with myself. I have a problem with all these statistics on that. One of the other issues that I'd like to talk about is the trippers. Mr. Bandadian and I had a discussion about seven years ago about adding trippers for Route 5 and 7 because of Hoover and toll, because of the increased number of kids who got off school. However, when you look at the proposal here today, it doesn't talk anything about the tripper for Route 7, Route 6, which services Glendale High School, and Route 4 that also services Glendale High School and Roosevelt Middle School. If anybody ever tries to ride those buses when you get on on Glendale Avenue in Chevy Chase, I suggest you carry a baseball bat to get on the bus. We're talking about the fare increases, and this is interesting because if you increase the fares from 25 cents to option A, which is 50 cents, and then what have you, it really kind of gets kind of crazy. But, one of the interesting issues is the fares for the senior citizen and disabled people. Currently, it's $4.50. Under option A, they're talking about $18. It's a 400% rate increase. Option B, which is a 75 cents option, it goes up to $13.50, which is a 230% rate increase. I am a senior citizen, and I'm over 65, and I am waiting for a heart transplant. So, I am disabled, but unfortunately, I don't happen to be able to fall into that low-income category bracket. But, I do know a lot of other people who I have gone with to their doctor for eyeglasses, and I gave them $50 so they can get their eyeglasses. Now, where are they going to come up with this kind of money? The other issue regarding the dialer ride I wanted to talk about was the increase in fare for the companion or caregiver. I know a lot of senior citizens. I know a lot of disabled people who are visually impaired and physically disabled that are confined to wheelchairs, and now, all of a sudden, they're riding free, and now, you're going to charge a $1 rate increase. The other thing is, based on this paper here, you were talking about raising the fares to 75 cents. If those fares are raised to 75 cents and not considering the senior citizens, on Route 2, you're going to cancel Sunday services on Route 1. You will also cancel Sunday services on Route 2. And, I'm not sure about Sunday and Saturday services for, on Route 2. But, you're also going to cancel Route 7, Saturday services. Saturday services in the morning have a large number of Glendale College students going from West Glen Oaks Boulevard all the way to the Glendale City College. The other question is, if you cancel Saturday, Sunday services on Routes 1 and 2, my question is, what is going to happen to the people who go to St. Mary's Armenian Church? Because, according to my statistics, there are 50 to 60 passengers who get off at Central and Lomita on a Sunday. And, that's after four weeks of survey by Teamsters Local 848. Now, are we going to say we're not going to allow the Armenians to go to their church on Sunday? Or, are we going to take in consideration? Because if, thank you. I'm good.
Well, I just also wanted to point out to you, as well as cutting you off, but that we're not talking about cutting any of the Sunday or Saturday services any longer. So, that was one of the changes that we've made in these new proposals.
Oh, you won't cut any services?
I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we're cutting any Saturday or Sunday service, right?
Would somebody like to put that in blood?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Brooke Gere-Person.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Nice to be back here. Excuse the glasses. I am Brooke Gere-Person. I'm the executive director of the Glendale TMA. I represent 13 companies in Glendale, and depending upon whose employee count you count, somewhere between 10,000 and 14,000 employees. I have been in contact with my member companies, talking about the proposed changes to the Glendale B-line, and I just had a membership meeting actually at lunchtime today with them. I'm going to break my comments into two things. One is general comments. General comments. They hate increases every six months. They were so mad when Metrolink was doing this. Every three to six months, Metrolink was raising their fare. They hated it. Raise your fare, do it once a year, call it good. That was consistently heard. Another comment was with things like increasing the fares, a lot of the lunchtime people will no longer be going to lunch elsewhere. They will either be bringing their lunch or, great news, bringing their cars. Traffic will become another issue, and it's been a couple of years since traffic was a constant on the Glendale scene. So, you know, thanks to the down economy. They also wanted to really let everybody know, keep it simple. They have enough on their mind without trying to figure out route numbers, locations, stops. Make it simple. Make it so I can walk out of my door, know what B-line to get on and where it will be. That was pretty consistent. Again, keep the numbering on the buses simple. Make it easy to get on the right bus. Again, develop a fare proposal so every year or every 18 months, it is examined in detail so your fares stay current. $2 for Metrolink riders per trip, that's $88 a month. And, they have just gone through an 8% increase in Metrolink tickets, along with two other increases in the past 18 months. So, you're really asking a lot out of Metrolink riders. I realize they're not residents, so it's easier to pick on the employees, but they're also the ones bringing the cars to the city. So, I really, that was very hard for the Metrolink riders to stomach, was an additional $88 a month just to get from the train station to their work site. So, those are my general comments. Now, let's talk about Route 12. My suggestion is something nobody has brought up. Remember my, make it efficient, make it effective. Every time I have been on the Glendale B-line, everybody gets off between Alameda and Grand View. So, make that your route. I actually Googled, it is six, let me, let me get up here. It is three miles to go from the Glendale Train Station to Grand View and San Fernando, and it takes 14 minutes. So, that's every trip, three miles and 14 minutes. And, you only have one or two people getting off there. The last time I took Route 11, I was actually in hysterics because everybody got off before Grand View and San Fernando, except for one person who literally wrote it down to the Burb, to the Glendale Train Station and got off at the Glendale Train Station. She saved money on her Metrolink ticket and got a free ride to the Glendale Train Station. Everybody else was off at their job site working. Now, let's talk about why I want to support the Burbank Train Station. We have direct service for the Antelope Valley Line and the Ventura County Line. Both stop at Burbank, the employees get off, get to work in probably 10 minutes, maybe 12. If they come down to the Glendale Train Station, it takes them 14 minutes just to get back up to Grand View and San Fernando. Then, coming home, you have to add that 14 minutes. You come down to Glendale, wave to your work site as you go by, going back up to Antelope or Ventura County. That time is important when you're a worker. In fact, it's sometimes you can't work an eight-hour day and do that. Another thing I want this commission to think about is 400 additional cars in that neighborhood. Let's think about 400 additional cars. I don't care if they're all Priuses. They're going to be on your roads, tearing up your roads, causing road construction, doing all of that kind of damage. You also have residents in that area... You also have residents in that area who are not happy with the construction. How are they going to feel about four hundred more cars on their road? That's not something I personally am real happy about, and I live north of that area. Some other ideas. The Glendale TMA offers an emergency ride home. So if you're a member company, your employees get an emergency ride home if you take MetroLink and need to go home for some reason. Station cars tend to be old, not so great. Air pollution, again, you've got congestion on the road. You have major construction happening in that neighborhood. The DreamWorks building just finished. You have things happening with Disney. Both DreamWorks and Disney have made commitments to the city and to other agencies, saying, "We're going to do what we can to get our employees to carpool, take MetroLink, take a van pool." You're just wiping them out. I know I'm taking more time than I have.
Yeah, I've got to wrap it up.
Can I... I'm sitting here going, "You're being really short-sighted with killing Route Twelve." Again, cut it off there at San Fernando Road and Grandview. Your costs are going to go down. Your needs are going to be there. And I'll be seeing you guys again.
Thank you. Did anybody else in the audience have a... Want to make any comments? Or... No? Okay. So we'll close the public hearing. I do want to ask about that last comment about running Route Twelve. Not that it's really going to change my opinion in any way, but did you look at actually considering running Route Twelve just from Burbank down to Grand Central and back and not taking it into Glendale hardly at all? Or is that just not going to work with your system?
It certainly is an option. It wouldn't be a preferred option. What it does do is abandons the GTC, where we have a number of folks that take the Riverside Line and the Orange County Lines coming northbound, and leaves them without service along the San Fernando Road corridor. They would have service from GTC up to downtown Glendale using Routes One and Two, but it doesn't give them anything different than what the other folks using the Burbank station would have by use...
But they could just go to the Burbank station and get the same thing. Or they could walk a block, as you said before, and take Ninety-four or Seven-Ninety-four.
Right. If they were taking the Riverside or the Orange County Lines, if they went to the Burbank station, again, they have a fare change zone between Glendale and Burbank. And they would get on Burbank, go to downtown, transfer downtown to go south or east. And when I say downtown, it's downtown Los Angeles, the Union Station for the MetroLink service. So you're going to impact riders either way. There are more riders that come from North County and Ventura to the Burbank station. But again, Burbank station is in Burbank. You know, one of the things was, policy-wise, do we abandon the Glendale station for the Burbank station? So we hadn't seriously considered it. We looked at the numbers and said, "How do you make that work?"
Okay. Does anyone else have questions before we get into comments?
Well, yeah, about the same issue. How many stops are in Burbank versus in Glendale on the... Say we did the north part of that route.
Comparatively, very few. And I can give you that number pretty...
Few meaning few in Burbank?
In Burbank.
Who does it primarily serving? Glendale businesses or Burbank businesses?
It's primarily, sure, Glendale.
Well, there's two stops. There's a stop on Flower and Verdugo, which is Burbank, and then Flower and Alameda, which services buildings that are kind of right there on the border. So some are in Burbank, some are in Glendale, as far as the destinations for those passengers. Everything else is in Glendale.
Now, looking at your charts, even if we had a two-dollar fare, there's still a cost to the system of four hundred thousand?
To run the full service.
How would... If that were included in your numbers, how does that work with the rest of BB? Can the BB option absorb that extra money? Or does that mean that throw things off?
That means you have to go back to the menu and select other, either fare increases or service reductions.
And have employers been approached about subsidizing?
We have not.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one of the aspects is specifically to the MetroLink services. Again, it is a unique service... I mean, MetroLink is a commuter service, and definitely, for the long haul, you want to encourage commuters to use the MetroLink. And we tie into it. All these years, we've operated the way it is. We've basically had a bus waiting as you get off the train. You're able to go to your destination. So we are going to approach the employers. In this economy, nobody likes to pay more. Even if we, instead of Glendale, we told our employees, "Now you have to charge." We have employees that write the Express. They use it. So they're going to be exposed to that same fare increase as Disney or any of their larger employers in that corridor are. So we are going to talk to... We've offered to meet with the TMA again. Again, definitely ask them, large employers, to say, "Would you subsidize the employee portion as part of their ride-share TDM program so that we can continue the service?" I don't have the answer to that. In this economy, as I said, many of the employers' anticipated answer is going to be no. But we... Doesn't mean that we can't ask. And it's a critical service. It's helpful for their employees. It's helpful for the city's TDM program. So definitely, we will be approaching them, whether at the chamber level, which we're going to meet with them, as well as the larger employers that are in the city, part of the members... Member of the Glendale TMA, or the ones that are not even a member. So our goal is to approach them and ask them for subsidizing. How much? I don't know. What mechanism we will use? Is it per employee, or a dollar more, or two dollars more? Because depending on what service level we provide, it could be three-dollar subsidy, four-dollar subsidy, et cetera. That's... Those are the levels that we will be asking.
Okay.
Okay. Jenna, I have a question for you. And I asked my fellow Commissioners just to give me a... Indulge me in just one minute, so I can go back one second on this... Before getting to this issue of the, you know, fee, the fare increases, I have a question about, has the city done any negotiations or examined the bidding process with the drivers' union? And when was the last time that was... I'm just trying to... I understand we have to deal with this. But I want to understand, has everything been done to squeeze whatever we can squeeze before it gets to the public? And I guess my question is, has that issue been addressed? Has there been... And is it a bidding process with the unions or different companies that would do the driving? When was the last time that happened? Is that something that's done on a regular basis? Because I feel like that's... I want to understand that before moving on, in my mind.
As far as our contract with MV Transit, which is our transit provider, we just recently bid the contract, and it's a union shop. In other words, when they bid the contract, already they have union wages that are built into their contract. So that's what these... Our hourly rate that we pay MV includes the union rates.
Okay.
And because it is an issue between the contractor and the union, we do not get involved in the union issues in terms of negotiating directly with the union.
Right.
However, if we have a union contract, if they propose union wages as part of the contract, we honor it, a part of our, you know, cost proposal that they submitted. And in the last go-around, when MV was the successful proposer for the service, essentially, I want to say, we squeezed everything we could out of the contract to keep the contract as efficient as possible. And I don't recall the percentage increase, Catherine, if you can help me, in terms of the service cost increase, revenue service hour costs that went up?
Every year during the... It's a five-year contract plus two optional years. Every year of the contract is a little bit different, depending upon where they are with their union agreement. So for the first two years, it was about a three percent increase in contract costs year over year. This year is a renegotiation year for the union. And so they did budget in a fair... An increase in employee costs, combination of benefits and salaries or rates per hour. So that is built into the contract. So no matter what the union negotiates with MV, we have a locked-in contract over that negotiation period for three more years. And then we have two optional years after that. So we planned very carefully, you know, through that proposal process, very careful on how we have them structure their pricing and give that back, so we can make sure we were still getting our same level of service, same level of maintenance, and not taking... Not sacrificing one for the other over the length of the contract. So our contract is really solid at this point. And it's cost-efficient as...
Can be.
As can be.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Commissioners, I can wait for my comments or help maybe, Commission, to, you know, based on some of the questioning that you've had from our expert, Catherine and myself, or the public input, just give you some ideas in terms of maybe looking at a higher level rather than get into the details first before you want to discuss and debate what would be the option. First of all, personally, and I know for Catherine, we're both very... We're transit advocates. The last thing, all these years we've done, is to keep the fare at twenty-five cents. And maybe it's a mistake that we kept it at twenty-five cents. You know, sometimes you say, in the good times, you increase it, and the bad times, you don't touch it. But we're in the bad times and the bad economy. But all our years, we've tried to not increase service to the level that even we could. I mean, right now, there is additional service in Glendale that we can add. No question about it. We can put some other lines, and we can get more ridership on the B-line. Unfortunately, we don't have the funding for it. So wherever we could, even though we had some funding available, we saved those, we put it in a reserve. Over the years, our reserves have built up so that we were able to use the reserve dollars to match, to buy additional buses through grants from LA Metro, primarily. So over the last... We mentioned it last time, I think, about sixteen, seventeen buses that we will be buying, through using our reserve dollars we've saved over the years, to be able to buy buses. We also have a plan to build a maintenance facility for the B-line, at the tune of somewhere about ten to twelve million dollars, depending what the B-line... The bids come in. So that's programmed in this entire fare structure increase and the financial plan that we're putting together. We're planning to build a maintenance facility. Otherwise, every time or every year, our contractor negotiates a lease with their property facility that they're in, if they... The property owner doesn't want the facility, they're going to be asking us to move out of there, which means that we have not found a facility close by in the proximity within the city of Glendale like we have right now. We may be in Sunland and somewhere farther out, which means our service cost is going to go up. So it is critical that part of our entire financial package, that we keep in mind that, again, a fare increase or all the other sources of funding that we've identified in our funding sources, we're able to build a facility. And we were fortunate, through our efforts with Metro, we have half of that cost of about twelve million dollars secured in grant monies, that the other half is coming out of our property and seed dollars in order to match it, to get to about twelve million dollars. So if we don't come up with our local match or keep the... Instead of using the local match reserve for the facility, yes, you can set aside not build a facility, but then down the line in a year or two, we'll back to square one when we have to build a facility, and we're going to have more expenses as a result of down, you know, deadheading back and forth to somewhere farther outside the city. So that's very important. I think you look at some of our adjacent cities, like Pasadena or Burbank, they have a seventy-five cent fare and a dollar fare. I don't have the statistics for them, but they didn't lose, I want to say, forty percent ridership when they put in their fares. In fact, they started at a higher fare, like fifty cents. Now, it is a drastic jump from a twenty-five cent to seventy-five cents. It's a fifty-cent increase. For a person who rides it a round trip, it's a dollar a day, technically, if they only ride it once. So Dan's projection originally, you know, and the fare projection, and I want to verify, double-check with him again, is the gradual increases, you know, obviously, the impact to the ridership is less. So if you go from fifty cents to seventy-five, from seventy-five to a dollar, it's like, you know, making smaller payments than making bigger payment. You get used to it as you go forward. So in our option that we prefer to the Commission, although the dollar is still desirable so that you can keep the level of service that we want to keep, we said, "Let's go with the seventy-five cent and then go to a dollar increase." If you are concerned about the entire fare elasticity issue, ridership loss, then, you know, obviously, fifty cent is an option, to go to a fifty cent, again, potentially increase it from fifty to seventy-five, seventy-five to a dollar over a period of time. But again, it comes down to the bottom line that if you go with the fifty cent, then we have to cut more service. And some of the surveys, although the responses that you got in your packet, if you read, and I think Dan verified that, people are more willing to pay a little more as long as they don't cut... You don't cut service. So I think you hurt the transit dependent which way more. Is it going to a seventy-five cent and at least keep the service that they need to go to school or they need to go to work, which almost sixty percent of our ridership, thirty percent or so is students, forty... Close to forty percent is use it to go to work. The other one is for recreation purposes, other purposes, if you look at the ridership of the B-line. So for somebody who has to take it to work, what is the option? Then you're... Are we forcing them to go and pay a higher fare? Because they still have to go to work. They have to go to school. And would they be then using the Metro? That's not a good solution, because they have to pay a higher fare. So in my almost eighteen years with the B-line, where we started with one hundred thousand passengers a year, now we're about two-point-five, close to two-point-five. And so every time, you know, we have a captured audience. In other words, yes, the Metro has been there. We are duplicating Metro over the years. Metro used to fight us tooth and nail not to duplicate their service, but our services are more tailored to Glendale. There are short trips to the college, to the high schools, et cetera, et cetera. So definitely, that, I think, will play a role in not losing ridership as much, as statistically or based on experience that Diane Boye said, you can get up to forty percent. The numbers will tell at the end of the day, once in a year or two, once we've increased the fare, it will tell us, actually, did you lose ridership or did the revenue that you were projecting is exactly what we projected right now. I think the forty percent ridership decrease is the worst-case scenario. I personally, my experience with the B-line, I don't think it will be there. Would we lose ridership? I'm sure we will. Is it fifteen, twenty, midpoint? I can't guarantee what it is, but from my experience, that the Metro still does higher fare. There is not equivalent service unless you're going from point A to B on the major arterial that Metro operates, that are direct point one to point B. And the frequency of Metro is equivalent to the B-line. We have a good opportunity that they will use it. Otherwise, they're still, in my opinion, will use the B-line service over the Metro service, or maybe look at the alternatives, getting rides, the carpools, et cetera, et cetera, for the dependent, transit dependent. I don't think those are very good options that we can provide. So my suggestion to the Commission is, keep in mind, you know, in addition to the fare increase, well, there are some policy issues in terms of, we still have to come up with close to a million dollar in additional revenue from other sources, whether it's our measured all-local return, whether in looking at our downtown mobility funding that is about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars or so that staff would recommend city council, that we should take parking revenue funds and use that for the B-line operations on an annual basis. That is a policy issue right now. It's beyond the Commission in terms of, we need to get that direction from council. But we still, in addition to the fare increase, we still have to come up with additional funding to be able to stay in the black, basically, in the next five years and have a service, transit service, that will have average of five to seven years of vehicle... Vehicles that are five to seven years old. We have a maintenance facility in place at the end of the five years. The next two, three years, we can build it and have it in place. And the level of service that you see here, it's in place. Another factor, I think, Commissioner Yucubian raised, in terms of the students and impacts to the students, again, it is very important to us. The trippers will be there. I mean, we, in fact, even though today, recently with the college starts, the first two weeks of college is crazy. Everybody's adding classes. We added trippers. We had no choice. I mean, buses would arrive at the Hoover High School, they were already full on Route Seven. We added trippers there. I mean, so we are, assuming the worst case, we still have some savings through this whole restructuring, in order to keep that on a fluctuation we will encounter throughout the year. So that's also very important to keep in mind when you're discussing this. So my suggestion is, if you don't feel comfortable with a seventy-five cent, keeping in mind that that could have a ridership impact, the fifty cent is... Could be a good fare, I mean, increase. However, it comes with the service cuts, which are outlined in the staff report, you know, take out Saturday service in a couple... know, take out Saturday service in a couple of these, which I think those are as critical to the different B-line riders that they use the weekend for, use the B-line on the weekends. Those are some of the very, very important, and I think it's, as I said, we as staff were not in favor of it. We will do everything we can, whether the additional sources of funding, and advocate with City Council that we need to look at these other dollar amounts that the city can allocate so we can maintain the level of service here. And I think with Commission's direction that we received on Route 3 restructuring and Route 12, obviously Route 13 to be eliminated totally regardless of what option that you pick, you still are keeping a good level of service. I mean, the, in terms of, are you losing ridership because of service cut under the option BB, which is the 75 cent? I think you're still keeping a fairly good level of service that we currently provide. We're not cutting as much as we would have if we went down to the 50 cent level. So, again, I just thought maybe it can help formulate your discussion, and I don't want to be in your shoes in some ways, but at the same time, I put ourselves in the same position that what can we do not to cut service? And that's been our goal from day one. Unfortunately, we're at a level that if we can be spending our reserves that are already allocated for local matches to buy buses or a maintenance facility, while we're deliberating whether we go to 50 cents or 70 cents, we're just kind of dipping into our reserve every day and continue. At the end of the year, we're going to be short, we're going to have to take out money out of the reserve. Next year, we'll be more shorter. So, one option you may consider, like we recommended, and the 75 cents and the dollar, go after 18 months, go to the dollar if you go with the 75 cent. You may consider go with a 50 cent fare increase for a shorter period of time so that you don't get a hit, total hit to the riders, and then start at 75 cent and then 18 months later, go to a dollar. That's not my recommendation, but if that helps you, basically, from a policy standpoint, looking at for the best of the community, that could be an option of, a third option of, but go with a shorter period with a 50 cent increase, and then go to the 75 cents. Thank you.
Okay. Who would like to begin? Okay. Chairman, Commissioner Wiseman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, would have to agree with the spirit of what John O. said about us, and I probably, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I suspect that all of us are in favor of supporting transit to the degree that's possible. And the dilemma that we're faced with here tonight is basically on one side, the good public policy things we can do by helping to improve and augment our transit, and the fact that we're up against a budget situation that simply is not going to allow us to continue to operate as we have before. I think in terms of what the last thing John O. was talking about, the increase to 50 and then to 75, I'm keeping in mind what Brooke said about frequency of fare increases, and my inclination, I think, at this point is maybe to go straight to the 75 and not have a step at 50 cents in between. Yes, it is going to be painful, but it's pain we're going to have to undertake, and maybe there is something to be said for going straight to it. I think at this point, I would probably be willing to support option BB as we have it on here now. Specifically, though, I would like to mention the issue of Route 12, and I think there is room there for, if the city can effectively partner with the Glendale TMA employees, and I think that could turn into a win-win situation if they're willing to meet us halfway. They need, of course, to understand the constraints that we're dealing with, and if any gain can be made by fiddling with the route, you know, in terms of the stops or the length of it, I would certainly be willing to look at that. That's where I am right now. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Yakubian, are you ready to go?
Yeah, sure, I'm ready to go. I am in support, I looked at the two, the two options, the AA, the BB. Doesn't seem like the AA, even with the increase to a $1 immediately, produces, you know, the savings that the BB would generate. I am in favor of option BB. I do have a concern with Route 12, and it's this. The concern I have, and someone touched on it before, it kind of sends the wrong message to be abandoning the GTC. And I have, I'm trying to look a little bit beyond the horizon, and I feel like we're sending a mixed message to people while we're trying to increase different modes of transit, get people to move around in ways other than cars, and then not, I understand the numbers aren't there, and I understand the ridership isn't great, but I'm hoping that in the future with, you know, increased rail activity between Union Station, through Glendale, through Burbank and the partnerships, that, I just feel that that's a slight to the efforts, our future efforts, 12. And in addition, the idea, you know, and I saw you at the, and I saw many of you Commissioners at the Fairmont Bridge opening, and I believe someone had mentioned that Councilwoman Laura Friedman was, brought us some good news about redevelopment in that San Fernando area. I would love to keep that option available for the future, for that development, for that Route, you know, Route 12 to be going up and down, and maybe I'm an idealist or what, but I just feel for, to cut it off to the GTC and cut off service there is, is not the right thing to do. Although I, Ms. Engle's discussion about other options, other alternatives, I would like to see, if we do cut it, I would like to see some alternatives. And as Commissioner Wiseman was mentioning, you know, partnerships and discussions, because I definitely feel that there's a wave of change happening in San Fernando, on that corridor, in that area, and I'd like for 12 to be around to see it. So, that's, that's my thought on that. But I will probably be supporting the option BB. My call.
Yeah, I think I echo my colleagues, I support BB. And on Route 12, it is unfortunate, Metrolink is a, you know, it's a good regional rail service, it would be very nice to be able to build on that because the problem we always have is cars coming into the area, less so the Glendale. So I would look for partnering with businesses, with the city of Burbank, with, you know, redirecting the MTA to maybe, you know, veer their routes to the extent they can. But I think the bottom line would be on 12, unless, I wouldn't want to sacrifice any more service than the other routes. So, to the extent you can assemble a package that you can preserve 12 even at a $2 fare, and the rest is taken care of, let's do it. But if it means any other cuts in the system, I would say no. And there may be a transition issue. If we, if this is adopted the next month or so, whatever the timeframe is, how does that dovetail with changing? Do you have enough time to negotiate changes to 12 or 11? So, BB, 12, 12 if it can happen, but let's, but no more service reductions, the rest of the system would be my thought.
Commissioner, would you like to go?
Yes, yes, Mr. President. I'm also leaning towards BB. As far as Route 12, I mean, we're dealing with numbers, we know what the ridership is, and it's low. That's reality. And we need to be realistic. You know, increase the fare as much as you can without impacting service, that's not going to happen. We want to have good service and find a median as far as the fare is. And I think as much as I'd like to go to 50 cents, I think 75 cents is reasonable. I also agree that no matter how much you're increasing it, if you increase rates every six months, the bottom line is people are going to say they're increasing rates every six months, even if it's 2 cents every six months. So, I think we need to jump to 75 cents, and I think Route 12, by all means, if we can subsidize it from the private sector, that's fine, let's do it. But I'm willing to vote on it as is, as proposed by staff at this point.
Okay, so, I am somewhat in favor of BB, but I'm, I just, I'm not going to get behind the increase to 75 cents because I am just too concerned about the impact that this will have on lower income and fixed income riders, as well as the significant drop-off that I think will happen from the people who are not so transit dependent and we can basically keep locked in, those like students who can easily, you know, work, get a ride from their parents or ride a bike, which would be nice, but they're going to have other alternatives. And so I'm very, very skeptical about the concept of raising it to 75 cents right away. I've done some research on a lot of these matters. First of all, I can tell you that the fare has stayed at 25 cents for 17 years, and over those 17 years, there's been a 50% increase in the Consumer Price Index. So, we're still talking about doing an increase, more than double the Consumer Price Index just at the 50 cents, and triple the Consumer Price Index to 75 cents. So, for people who live on fixed incomes, who, where their increases are tied to CPI, these are not insignificant numbers. These are very significant numbers. And as the only person on this Commission who lives south of the 134, and so I'm the voice, I guess, of the lower income communities of Glendale, I won't support anything more than a 50 cent increase in the fare right now. Maybe later, later on, we could look at increasing it to 75 cents and a dollar if, after the first raise to 50 cents, the impact in the ridership has not been that significant. But barring that, I won't, I won't support it. I'm very concerned that we'll have a significant drop-off and that we will have not the kinds of revenues forecast that have been projected. Just doing a simple analysis of these numbers, and I'd like to, again, see some spreadsheets from Mr. Boyle in terms of what these numbers look like, but I just don't think that the revenues are going to materialize because you're going to have significant drop-offs. I would like to suggest that there are other alternatives that we can consider in the future and that might be considered by Council. One of the ones that came up in our earlier discussion was the issue of cutting either Route 1 or Route 2. Now, these routes overlap each other to a certain extent because they are only one block away from each other, running in basically opposite directions. It could very well be considered to drop one of those and increase service on the other one to save about a half a million dollars, having better service overall and just people would have to block a block at the end of their, at the end of their stop. I definitely recommend that we try to get money from the downtown parking fund allocated to B-line. That's the right kind of step. That's the right precedent. It's taking money from people who are basically encouraged to drive and having it going to people, encouraging them to take transit. So I think that that's the right thing to do, it's the right direction. We should definitely recommend that. And to the extent that there is any kind of increase in fares above 50 cents, that I would highly recommend that they be stepped and not imposed immediately, just because of the impact on lower income and fixed income people. So, that's my viewpoint. Any other comments?
Well, I guess briefly, I mean, I still support 75 cents, and I think there's a little irony by being so good for so long at 25. If we'd raised it to 50 cents five years ago, it'd be more amenable to 75 cents, but you'd hear there. Are we looking for, are we looking to do a motion today to recommend BB?
Yes.
Or an option?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fogg, we, at the last meeting, it was just more of a look, giving you options. We came back, we felt that if we at least give the Council an idea of what the Commission thinks, and I'm sure they're going to have to deliberate the same way, it will help them, guide them in that respect because they do respect your opinion. So, if at all possible, we'd like, we seek a motion, we have already included the motion in your packet, and if you can use that motion or you want to modify it, we'd be happy to modify it for you.
I'd like to move that we adopt option BB, as written with future work on Route 12, with the provision it doesn't otherwise impact what's outlined in BB.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fogg?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stahockin?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakubian?
Yes.
Chairperson Welch?
No.
Okay, next item.
Incurrence on what direction you'd like us to?
Well, but that was included in BB. The
Everything's
No change in $1.25.
No change in a $1.25.
Okay.
Okay, so, next item.
Item 5 is Commission Staff Comments Update.
Mr. Bagdani, did you have anything more that you wanted?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, a couple of, just for the next couple of Commission meetings, I wanted to give you update on the topics that we were planning to bring to the Commission. First of all, the closest one, September 20th, we would like to see if we can block, have the flexibility during the day, probably before noon, for the South Brand Subcommittee, which involves Commissioners Wiseman and Chairperson Welch. We're trying to program that with our consultant so that we can have a meeting to, and the Auto Dealer Representative Resilience Resilience, to have a meeting with the Subcommittee. South Brand, a
September 20th?
September 20th.
Yes.
I would say somewhere between 11 to 1 timeframe, in that range, we're trying to work on that. And we're coordinating with the Auto Dealer Representatives as well as the residents so that we can have a presentation on the South Brand Study. We'll send you the copy of the study first, so you're you to review. Staff is currently reviewing, we were trying to do it earlier, but the timing didn't work out with the other participants. So that would be, and then on the September 27th, we would like to bring that study to the Commission. If everything works well and we get good feedback from the South Brand Subcommittee, we will bring that to the full Commission for your review. We'll have our consultant make a presentation at that meeting. And then for the October meeting, there's two possibilities. One is to, if everything goes well, we'll bring the South Brand Study to the October meeting for the final review comment from the Transportation Parking Commission. Or we may have a, the non-emergency vehicle applications that we're currently working on, the ones that need to be extended and renewed, we will bring that to the Commission at your October meeting. One or the two, or both of them, depending on if we have all the information from the applicants for the non-emergency. And then for the November 3rd, or November 17, and I will send this via an email to all the Commissioners, potentially, we can have a joint study session with the Planning Commission on parking standards, just to give you an overview of what the recommendations are from our consultant Nelson Nygaard on parking standards for the downtown Glendale area, and potentially bringing a final recommendation to the Commission, final review and final recommendation from the Commission to Council on the November 23rd meeting, your regular meeting. In between these, for the next Commission meeting, I will also bring in a discussion item for the, as you requested Chairman Welch, on taxis. I've put together a scope of services with, from Nelson Nygaard to present to the Commission and for your review and input so that we can engage them, and also discuss And also discuss overall in terms of what happens of the current taxi permits, the owners' operators that are operating currently and their, their owner's permit expires next year, plus a new application that has been submitted for, for operating in Glendale. Have a commission discussion on that as Chairperson requests it. So those are, you know, the upcoming three meetings, just to give you a heads up. There'll be a lot of new information coming your way. In addition, I will make sure that you get a copy of the packet that goes to City Council for their B-line fare structuring, restructuring, and service reduction options that they will consider at their study session on the 21st.
So the study session will not be a joint session with us or?
I, I will have to check with the, usually the study sessions are just for City Council. However, as you know, I'm sure that they will love to hear from the commission individually or, you know, we will present that this is what the commission, after looking at all the options and evaluating them in two meetings, this is what the recommendation was. But I'm sure you're more than welcome to participate and, you know, let the council know how you feel about this whole fare structure and service changes.
And you'll be?
Yes, you will know. Right now, again, I will put this in a form of a calendar, all the tentative dates so that you know what those dates are, give you an idea. At the same time, also to give you an update, we're working on our BikeWay master plan. We've basically finished some of the work that had to be done, the field check. We've got a couple of, a draft plan in place, but one of the other things I wanted to ask the commission, I think, I've already asked the commission, we have representation for the, a bicycle technical committee. I think Commissioner Weisman, you had volunteered on that one, and so.
I volunteer for everything.
Yeah, all of them. So if any other commissioner is interested in BikeWay, you know, technical committee to participate in.
What do you mean by technical?
Okay, what we've done is we're going to have, we have bicycle advocates, people who are really interested in promoting, developing bicycle facilities in Glendale. With a team of in-house staff, that not includes traffic engineering, but we also have public works, engineering staff that are working on street design, planning department, and parks and recreation department, we have put together a technical group with our consultant and bicycle advocates, the Transportation Parking Commission members, so that we will, as we're developing the plan, we're getting input from everybody. So it's not like we finalize, we finish a plan and give it to everybody to review. We like to have everybody's input upfront. So that's, that is what we're doing right now. So it'll be a technical committee that would, from a staff, internal staff, and then external interested parties will participate in the technical committee. We're probably going to have a one or two, three meetings and get their input, and then when we come to the commission and City Council, we've hopefully captured everybody's input. And once we have a.
I'd, I'd like to do that too, I would like.
Okay. I can only have two commissioners unfortunately because of the brown heck.
You guys want to flip a corner?
Yeah, a few.
What other committee are you in?
I'm on the Bike.
You need to be able to change your tire.
You are?
I'm on the Bike.
You have, through this, right.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee, yes. And I know Commissioner Weisman had volunteered, however.
So will this be a different Subcommittee than the Bike Master Planning Committee?
No.
It's the same.
This is the same one.
Oh, then I'll defer to you, okay.
Okay, okay. I will send you a calendar in the name of all the commissioners who have volunteered in which committees, Anush will be sending that by next week, and with the dates of these upcoming meetings so you can place them on your calendar. Essentially, I would also suggest, because it's hard to coordinate between the Planning Commission and TPC, basically November 3rd and the 17th, for now, just keep it open like between 4:00 to 6:00 PM. That would be the time, because we have reserved room, and that's one of the difficulties we have is.
PM.
PM, I'm sorry if I said that.
No.
Yeah, PM. So it's hard to get these rooms because we want to broadcast it live, so we make sure that you're available.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Any commission comments?
I do have one comment, and this, we've discussed this before, Jono, as far as work hours in the city, what time contractors can start working. And in this street, this morning, 7:15 AM, Ethel Street, they were doing tree trimming. Street was down to one lane for two directions of traffic. It was mind-boggling. I mean, it was unbelievable. Now, I understand we don't have an ordinance, that's what, what it's going to take. I'm not sure if it's generating any complaints, honestly. Probably not, otherwise you would have took some action against it. But again, there was an article that said we have the worst drivers in the nation. That was last week, right? Very recently, so maybe they don't like complaining. But honestly, there was no reason for that. I mean, at that time of day, AM rush hour, 7:15, with the college running, let them wait another half hour, and start at 8:00 AM, 8:30, you know?
We'll, we'll take care of it. There's no reason for that. They should be able to start later, especially on Ethel, because it's only very narrow street.
Very narrow.
And you, you can't, if you block one lane, you are in the opposing lane.
Yeah, and I'm not bringing it up because I drive it. I don't drive that. I happen to be passing from there. That's all, that's all. And I want to commend you this morning at the, at the presentation, the opening of the bridge. It was a very nice ceremony, and, and your hard work paid off. It, it was beautiful. Everybody's hard work was involved paid off.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to second that, Jono. It was a wonderful event this morning at the Fairmont Bridge opening, and to have so many people, respected individuals in the city, talk about the great work that you have done personally to get this bridge, this project, over decades to, to be completed, and in fine fashion. I just want to personally congratulate you, although it's officially known as the Fairmont Bridge, I will affectionately refer to it as the Bahadane Bridge.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, I'd echo that, and you should, you should thank you to council who, who told me she did a lot of the condemnation work. Lawyers are often left out, so I appreciate that. Why is it not open until next week? I was curious.
We have a, a couple of minor issues. One, there is some striping which we wanted to change, and believe it or not, these thermoplastic paints that we use, they're in huge demand nationwide. So was some of the changes we wanted to make, we just, you can't find them, and once you find them, you have to program it at the right time so the contractor can do that. The other part is a, a minor drainage issue that we encountered when we complete the bridge, you know, you do a drainage test, and we had some puddling at one area, and it is supposed to be done, it was planned to be done last week, because it's rubberized asphalt, the, and it's in a small quantity, it is hard to get rubberized asphalt in a small quantity. So it's programmed for early next week. So as soon as that's done, everything else is completed, can be opened. So a week from Monday is the worst time, I mean, is the best time, I think we will, we will be able to open the bridge.
So no cracks?
No, no. No. There were just minor, minor things that, beyond our control, but, and then we also encountered a little striking for the contractor who's finishing the job, their heavy equipment staff, or union, and they, you know, they run into a strike. Fortunately, at the end of the project, not at the beginning or in the middle. So those are things that are added to the delay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
Actually, I had a.
Oh, you had a, oh, please.
One quick comment, sorry for, for not being more assertive here. I just wanted to mention that last week, I attended a two-day course given by the Federal Highway Administration on Designing for Pedestrian Safety. And we were presented with all the latest and greatest information on the new MUTCD signals and signs and striping and all of that stuff, and in addition to participating in several workshops for actual design of intersections close to the metro headquarters at One Gateway Plaza. And did get a pedestrian safety guide and countermeasure selection system, has a lot of good stuff. I'm going to loan this to my colleague here since I've gone through it already. And he also mentioned something to me that it occurred to me in retrospect, I should have mentioned to the commission before this started, that this was available, because it was basically a free training class. I found out about it because I'm basically on the mailing list, having participated in previous metro seminars and pedestrian safety workshops. But I, I will definitely try and remember next time to let everybody know before it happens in case you all would like to participate. It's really very valuable, especially for a non-technical person like me, to be able to sit down for a couple of days with real traffic engineers and, and go through all the, the different pedestrian safety countermeasures in detail. So very valuable experience. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I know there is a couple coming up that LA Metro is sponsoring. I don't know if I can, we'll check into, if you're interested, I'll go ahead and send you the information. First, I have to check if we can, because it's for governmental agencies, so I think like we can qualify you as part of the Glendale, so, Commissioner, so I'll, I'll try to see if, and give you the, the dates. There's about six or seven of them in the next six months. There's a two-day course, I think it's the same one. I, I have the information.
And one, one other real valuable thing about attending these things is it's a really good opportunity to network. There are usually people there from just about every city municipality in Southern California. Some of them are professional traffic engineers, some of them are professional planning staff, some of them are policymakers, elected officials. So it's a good mix of people, and it's a good chance to, to meet people that are involved in some of the same things around Southern California.
Mr. President, Jono, on that note, the new MUTCD specs have changed for the high-level street name signs. How are we addressing that? Just curious.
We're looking at it.
Good.
That's all I can tell you.
They cost $1,000 each.
Very expensive, and this is one of those regulations or standards, when they change it seriously impacts the cities because then at least what we will do is build it into our sign replacement program over time, not immediately, because they do give you that option.
Who was the culprit behind it?
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Now, next item, please.
Item 6 is adjournment.
Okay. Would somebody like to move we adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
A second. Very good. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.